Well, the adjourned meeting Paramount City Council's order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Keon?
Here.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Here.
Councilmember Omos?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hofmeyer?
Here.
Mayor Hanson?
Here. City Council, public comment updates?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. We do have one from the August 6th City Council meeting. And if you recall, Mr. Robert and Ms. Star Mack came up to the City Council to request that ivy be removed from a block wall on Downey Avenue. This is just south of the 105 freeway. And also, they requested that if a trash receptacle can be placed near that location. The after action is that the staff inspected the location and trimmed the overgrown ivy that week. And the trimming of this ivy will be scheduled on a regular basis. A trash receptacle will also be placed there in the near future as part of our overall litter abatement program. We do have those new trash receptacles on order, and they should be coming in rather soon. And those will be distributed throughout the community. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thank you. Public comments?
Yes, sir. We do have two public comment cards. Our first one is from Ms. Andrea Crowe from the library. She like to discuss things going on at the library. And we've got one more.
Good afternoon, Mayor Hanson, councilmembers in the city of Paramount.
Good afternoon.
The new school year is about to start, and you know what that means: homework. But have no fear, Paramount Library is here to help. During weekday afternoons and on Saturdays, our homework help center is open. Students in kindergarten through 12th grade can receive in-person help with homework assignments. For students looking for one-on-one tutoring, we have a new online resource called Brainfuse. With a library card, students in kindergarten through college can log in every day from 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. and receive help in math, science, English, and history from an online tutor. On Tuesday, September 3rd, at 4:00 p.m., teens are invited to try out Brainfuse at our Brainfuse Help Now event led by our My Brothers Keeper peer advocate. Learn more about this and other great events at LACountyLibrary.org. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Mayor, is Mr. Alejandro Yanez, and he'd like to discuss general comments and adult recreation. Mr. Yanez?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Good afternoon, staff, fellow residents. My general comment is I wanted to clear up a couple of things. I saw some stuff posted on social media, and I wanted to come here and clear it up. I wanted to thank the firefighters and the police officers, all the public office and staff that helped out in that fire. Some of those negative comments don't reflect us as residents. That's not who we are. We support our firefighters, we support our public safety, most of all, we support our fellow residents. I think it's important that we point that out to fellow residents, and I really appreciate their service. Onto my second point. I want to continue on with adult recreation. Adult recreation is a needed part of our society. It helps out in day-to-day issues that we might have. In particular, handball really helps in the stress level to reduce it. Something about grabbing a small blue ball and smacking it against the wall relieves your tension. How, I don't know, I can't explain it. You'd have to play it in order to understand why we're after it so bad and why it's such an issue. I want to continue moving forward in a positive way and working with our council members and our staff in order to get our handball courts rebuilt and put up. It's a very needed necessity. Before I went out of time, there's one little, small negative thing that I have. I think we could improve on responding to fires in the city of Paramount. In the afternoon, about 6:30, I rode my bike over to where the fire was, and I noticed that I was breathing really hard. And I probably shouldn't have rode my bike over there, but being the nosey humans that we are sometimes, we've got to go see. I went to go see, and the toxic fumes were very toxic. I was like, wow, why wasn't I given any notice to avoid the area, to not be around it, you know? I wish I would have got a social blast from the city of Paramount in particular, or maybe public safety going around house to house, home to home, because a lot of Spanish-speaking people weren't aware of what was going on. I think that's some area that we could improve in as a city to notify our residents in the event of a fire, that we had some very toxic fumes in the air. Stay indoors. If you've got health issues, don't come outside. And by all means, just avoid the area. I added with that footnote, everybody talks about air quality. One way you could help is to ride your bike around town more often, get out of the car. If you're going to walk the walk and talk the talk, get out of your car, ride the bike, get around our city. Maybe you might get familiar with what's going on, what's needed. That's what I do. You see me right around the street with this hat on, these shorts and these floes? That's what I'm doing. I'm going around town, seeing what we might need, how could we improve, how could I talk to somebody and tell them that we all need to get involved in our community? I thank you for your time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Our next speaker's card, Mr. Mayor, is from Mr. Gerald Serta, and he'd like to discuss the fire.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Yes, I would like to thank the firefighters, the deputies, and first responders for yesterday's fire off Somerset. The incident reports from yesterday's fire mentioned the following: There were three explosions. Numerous business and residents were in harm's way. Business was not registered. Hazmat crews were called. Fire lasted about 40 minutes. Chemical stench drifting in the neighborhood, and illegal drug operation. I don't know how much of that is accurate, but this is what the reports mentioned after yesterday's fire. And my question is to you: Was the fire hydrant water pressure sufficient for this fire? Because I know it had tons of black smoke. It was out there for a while, a lot of fire engines. How were air monitors affected by toxins released during this fire? And how would the city handle these type of fires during school session? Because we looked out that the kids were still on break. And how could this clandestine business fall through the cracks after the city participated with a task force conducting door-to-door knocking a couple of years ago when the hexyl and chromium issue was mentioned? So we had EPA and all these agencies that went out there door-to-door just to inspect these businesses. And the question is, how could this business fall through the crack? Also, the city had the Subcommittee, Air Quality Subcommittee, that was in place to do permits, to do zoning, and again, this business fell through the crack. And they're saying it's not registered. I'm sure the investigation down the road will mention if it was or if it wasn't. But also, the city has a way of maybe identifying through the water use, if there's utilities in these businesses, how much water is being used. So that's one way of seeing this. They have probably, what, 50 gallons a week? Maybe it's for maintenance. But if you see 2,000 gallons a week, you know, that's a red flag. This business put up a fence that's probably like 20 feet tall. That's a red flag. And those are signs that code enforcement needs to look at so that we can avoid these issues. And again, it happened with businesses, and we're still not over that because we still have air issues. And now, we have this new business that went up in smoke, falling through some cracks. And you wonder, after all this was put in place with these agencies and the subcommittees, you ask yourself, it's like, well, how can the city department heads make six figures and we're still having the same issues? So these are questions that I would like to have answered. And again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That brings up a point. Do we have any?
Sure. I can respond to some of Mr. Serta's comments. Absolutely. As regards to the water pressure, I'd like Adriana Figueroa, our Public Works Director, to respond to that comment about the water pressure.
Certainly. Yes, Mr. Mayor, we did have all three of our wells operating at the same time. Water pressure never dropped. We were able to maintain consistent water pressure, not only for fire suppression activity, but also for portable water demand.
Okay, fine.
And I didn't hear anything from the fire department to that contrary. And I've been in touch with the fire chief at least three or four times yesterday morning and afternoon as the fire cleanup progressed. As far as the air monitors go, the air monitors are, as we know, in the area are scheduled every three days for them, for the AQMD to come and take them off. So we aren't sure yet whether or not it was a day of sampling, so we'll be able to find that out in the next few days. If it did, and again, these monitors are only measuring for hexyl and chromium, so we aren't sure if that was part of it and how close the monitors are to that. That's all has to be driven by AQMD. As far as how the city would handle a similar situation with the school district, when the notifications go out from public safety, the superintendent of schools is also CC'd on that as well. So she does get a notification from that. So it would be up to the school district to decide whether or not, you know, based on the environment, to keep the kids in or allow them to come in. But they are definitely notified if there is an emergency. And that holds true for any public safety incident that does go on. As far as how we allowed a business to go in there, obviously, we didn't allow them to go in there.
Yeah, right.
They went in there illegally operating. And as I mentioned to y'all, or as Maggie mentioned to y'all earlier in an email, we will be opening up an abatement case through our deputy district attorney for this location. The fire department has been in touch with the property owner, and the property owner is scheduled to be back soon to deal with the situation, and we will be notifying him. Yes, we did sweeps with AQMD back in 2016, at the end of 2016. Three years later, it's very possible that this business could have gone in after the sweeps. The sweeps occurred in December of that year. So it's very possible that this business could have gone in a year ago, eight months ago, two years ago. So that's the likely reason that was not caused. The Subcommittee part, the Subcommittee never looked at anything in regards to illegal businesses operating. Their main focus, their main mission was to look at the zoning code and come up with the recommendations to reform our industrial zoning code. And that's the job they did, and they did it well. And that was brought back to the council. And that's about it now.
Well, you have one question, I mean, for Adriana, on that whole thing, because maybe I'm totally wrong, but in some of those farms, if you will, what are they, hydrophonic? Hydrophonic farms, they call it, the water thing? Do we monitor where it would be a really high usage of water in a business like that? I mean, if you had a water, no, I did. I had a water leak one time and got a bill for almost $300 and almost had a stroke. And I thought, whoa, what the heck's going on? Well, I found a leak and got it fixed, so.
Not knowing the specifics of the business, you know, we look at residential usage, yeah, if you have a leak, it's a red flag because you're using a lot of water, right? But when it comes to commercial and industrial, depends on what their operations call for. They already have a bigger main, bigger meter, and so they are operating at a higher consumption rate than your typical residential, and it can fluctuate. Obviously, if we see a significant increase, it would be something that we would certainly catch, but it typically fluctuates.
Okay. All right.
Can I say something on that real quick? And Jerry, I understand your concerns, but I do want to say this: It's private property, and there's something called the Fourth Amendment, and it doesn't give a government entity's staff, no matter how much they make a year. It doesn't give them the ability to go onto private property and start snooping around because people have an expectation of privacy. So what does that mean? If there's a clandestine lab, then it's up to neighbors to say, hey, I suspect something going on, and call the Sheriff's Department. They'll then do a surveillance, they'll then write a search warrant. But short of somebody giving them that type of information, the city can't go in and start snooping and pooping and looking on private property. That's just the way it is, and that's why neighbors have to do their part. And if they suspect illegal activity, they need to call it in. So I just wanted to say that because I understand your frustration, but that's the nature of the beast, you know? And that's why neighbors need to be conscious of ped traffic, what's going on. And then, as far as the electricity goes, from my understanding, they were using butane tanks, so you're not going to see a spike in electricity. And the type of operation they were running didn't require a lot of water. So that's why they're able to do what they do, because they're really good at it, until there's fireworks.
Unfortunately, yeah. That's it?
[inaudible]
Yeah, we need to come forward here. We can't hear you back there.
Thank you for the responses. And that's just a question, is like, what can we do from here forward to avoid this from happening? And, you know, if there's going to be red flags with the water, with butane, because folks are getting really smart in these businesses, how they do this. But they're putting a lot of folks, residents, in danger.
Danger, there's no doubt.
If you see something, say something. If you see something, say something.
That's pretty bad.
Yeah, that's right. As they say, if you see something, say something.
Yes. Whenever they want to do something illegal, they're going to find a way to do it.
Yep, unfortunately.
And nothing ever happens until it happens, and then the consequences fall on everybody.
Yes.
But if they want to cheat, they're going to cheat.
Yeah, and this time, we looked out because, you know, there's no incidents, no people hurt, no fire department police hurt. But you saw how close it came to the properties behind and next door. And for three explosions, all it takes is one wall to collapse either way, and you have a mess, a bigger mess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, down to the consent calendar.
Move it.
Second.
Moved in second, moved by Lemmons, second by Hofmeyer. Move the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Keon?
I wasn't here. I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number three, landscaping services by Brightview Landscape Services, city project number 9933. We have staff report, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council. For the last four years, you know, we've been converting the landscape on our medians from dead lawn to drought-tolerant plants. This was in response to the state's order, which doesn't allow cities to water grass on street medians. Although you may seem, see some of the medians out there with green grass on them, just so you know, that's because those are being watered with recycled water. That part is still allowed. So little by little, we've converted our medians. So here's our Public Works Director, Adriana Figueroa, to tell us more about the conversion program and which street is next. Adriana?
Thank you, John. Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, as John indicated, the state's drought declarations and subsequent water conservation mandates forced the turf on many medians to die. Paramount took a proactive approach and began to retrofit its medians with drought-tolerant planting. Last fiscal year, we converted Alondra to drought-tolerant planting, and our fiscal year '20 budget includes funding for Rosecrans Avenue to be converted to drought-tolerant planting. That would be done east to west, from city limits to city limits. The medians will be similar to that of Paramount Boulevard, Downey Avenue, and of course, Alondra. As Brightview Landscape Services is our landscape maintenance contractor, sorry, I forgot to move the slide, we are requesting authorization to acquire their services for consistency for this project, and the amount of the work is included in the budget, and it's $156,714. On the left side of your screen is a picture of Rosecrans Avenue, which shows the dead turf, which again resulted from the state's water conservation mandate. And on the right side of your screen is a picture of the drought-tolerant planting on Downey Avenue. This provides a much better and aesthetically pleasing view of our major streets. So with that, the recommended action is to approve the purchase of landscaping services for refurbishment of street medians on Rosecrans Avenue by Brightview Landscape Services in the amount of $156,714. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions?
Move the item.
One second.
Been moved by Hofmeyer, second by Omos, to approve the landscaping services for the refurbishment of street medians on Rosecrans Avenue. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Keon?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hofmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item four, digital billboards. We have staff report.
Yes, sir. We've also recently seen digital billboards pop up along the 710 freeway and other surrounding freeways. These billboards have evolved over time, and they now use the latest lighting technology so that they can pass Caltrans' safety requirements. We were recently approached by a billboard company to allow them to install electronic billboard in the far west end of town along the 710 freeway. While we don't allow billboards in town, we found that with the council's consent, an exception could be made for this particular billboard at this particular location. But before we go any further, we'd like your input into this matter, and we'd like to share with you some of the benefits that, if the council was interested in this, that we could see from this. So with that, I'll turn it over to our planning director, Mr. John Carver, who will handle the item. John?
Thank you, John. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yes, so this is a discussion item regarding digital billboards. And we have been looking at the potential of a digital billboard adjacent to the 710 freeway since mid-2016, when we were approached by a billboard company. The proposed site is located north of Rosecrans Avenue, between the 710 freeway and the Los Angeles River, and is not accessible by a public road. This site is part of a larger 10-acre area that is owned by numerous absentee property owners and is not well-maintained. The site has also been the location of numerous homeless encampments. And if a billboard were allowed on the subject site within this 10-acre area, it could help to partially address the issue of homeless encampments and keep at least one property This is a look at the proposed site outlined in blue. You can see it's sandwiched in between the 710 freeway and the Los Angeles River. And in the lighter orange colors, you can see the other parcels out there. So there are numerous properties that surround it and have various property owners. As John mentioned, there are a number of billboards, digital billboards, along the 710 freeway, and a couple of cities have allowed those billboards to go in. Given that the Paramount site is more remote and difficult to access, it's not really associated with the city of Paramount. So the existing traditional billboards that we have in the city on Paramount, Alondra, the static billboards are owned by Clear Channel Outdoor and Outfront Billboards. Several years ago, we talked with Clear Channel and Outfront about possibly eliminating these traditional billboards in exchange for the possibility of doing a digital billboard near the 710 freeway. Neither company was interested at that time. However, we were recently approached by a smaller company with the proposal for a two-sided billboard adjacent to the 710 freeway. So if we were to proceed, we would negotiate a number of different things. We would negotiate to allow for public announcements on the billboard, and we would ensure that the billboard was constructed in an architecturally attractive manner. We would also make sure that brightness would not be a nuisance, and that the frequency that images change would not be a nuisance also. And the city could also receive an annual development fee in the range of $100,000. Here's a look at the site and a digital billboard superimposed. And here's a look at what a billboard could look like, some of the designs that we're looking at. So the pole's a little more decorative than what you may have seen along the freeway. And we would also look to do a decorative border around the billboard itself. And then, just a couple of examples of some other billboards on the left and the right. And you can see they're a little more decorative than maybe some billboards that were constructed 10 years ago. So the site is zoned heavy manufacturing, and we would process an overlay zone that would allow for digital billboards. We would also require a conditional use permit from the Planning Commission and design approval from the Development Review Board. And then, also, a development agreement that would specify, among other things, the annual development fee that would be paid to the city. So to summarize everything, the site is in a remote location. It's very difficult to develop for industrial purposes. We would ensure that the neighborhood to the south is not impacted negatively by the billboard through an environmental analysis and then also through the Development Review Board reviewing the design. And we could also have a partial remedy for some homeless encampments that we've had in this area. And we could also additionally ensure that the billboard is creative and artistic. We would have an agreement, again, that we would enter into with the city for an annual fee. And we would also negotiate for a percentage of the advertising to be dedicated to public And with that, it's recommended that you provide direction on preparing an ordinance to update the code to allow for the limited construction and operation of a digital billboard. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Questions?
I got one. John, did me a couple of years ago on the 105 freeway over on, what, by Garfield, somebody wanted to put up a billboard like that, and we thought it was kind of a hazard for traffic, people taking their eyes off the road, driving down the freeway and stuff like that. What's going to be different about this?
Yeah, you might be thinking of the Amapola market that had asked to do a pole sign, electronic pole sign. This is a much more remote location, so it's not in that congested area along the 105 freeway. So it seems like it's a little more safe, it's a little farther away from the freeway than the Amapola pole sign was proposed. And again, there are really strict restrictions that Caltrans has in place so that it doesn't become a hazard to drivers.
Also, in addition to that, I believe, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, right at Garfield and the on-ramp to the freeway there, there's a lot more traffic lights. I think the concern, if I recall, was that cars could be out of light and take their eyes off and not, you know, see a green light coming, oncoming cars. So there was just more potential there. At this location, because it's a freeway, there's a lot more movement. People won't be taking their eyes off it.
I was on the 710 freeway this morning. There wasn't much movement. [laughing] It was like a parking lot, huh?
Further questions?
I have a couple of questions, Mr. Mayor.
Go.
It was stated that this would help with the homeless encampments, and why exactly is that? What kind of process would make that a positive?
So as part of the development of a digital billboard, there would be a fencing that would be constructed around that property. So at least in that case, that property would be fenced off and...
A perimeter fencing.
Exactly. Right.
Also, in the report, I believe it mentioned that there were a couple of billboards on the Boulevard belonging to Clearwater Channel and somebody else, and that you had approached or they had not approached you about this being something they wanted to do so it wasn't going to address that issue. Are you hoping that if we have something like this in place, then they would take an interest? Do you have another plan in place for those particular billboards on the Boulevard?
If you want to answer that, John.
Sure. So the, yeah, right, so this whole area would have an overlay zone that would allow for digital billboards. There are restrictions with Caltrans on how close those could be together, but the potential is for another billboard that could go there. So Clear Channel, if the smaller billboard company does this project, Clear Channel could see that it is a feasible location, a good location, and then we could negotiate with them potentially to remove their billboards on Paramount Boulevard, Alondra Boulevard.
And then, my last question is, if we approved this change, would each billboard that is proposed to go up for the future require approval? Or are you setting aside certain ones? And if so, would that be before the council or the Planning Commission?
Yeah, so what, if you give us a direction to amend the code, first of all, the ordinance would go to the Planning Commission, then it would come to the City Council. And as part of that ordinance, it would be required to have a conditional use permit first from the Planning Commission, and then Development Review Board approval. So you would be approving the ordinance itself, but then there would be the, kind of the dual approval and process through the Planning Commission, Development Review Board, and then you would also have to approve, the council would have to approve, the development agreement.
Okay. And then, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just thought of one more question. Would the revenue that we would reap from this go to the general fund?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
I have a couple of questions. So would it only be Paramount advertisements that go up on this billboard?
Yes.
So then, how are they making their money?
They would have whoever, whatever commercial company there, you know, Pepsi. If Pepsi puts up an ad, that's how they make their money.
So it wouldn't be exclusive to Paramount advertising?
No, there would be a percentage of time that would be dedicated to public announcements, public Paramount announcements.
Okay, so, and then, I wanted to make sure that if they do an environmental study, that they look at the closest neighborhoods?
Yes.
To see if that lighting would affect those neighbors?
Yes.
So I want to make sure that that's done. And then, also, yeah, I don't think there's an issue. I mean, we have these type of... type of billboards and electronic digital right on main freeways with amber alerts and traffic notifications and all kinds of things. So I don't think that's an issue as much as the quality of life, as long as those lights aren't disturbing neighborhoods.
Right. And as part of the conditional use permit, there would be an environmental analysis that would be done to ensure that nobody is impacted negatively. There is that mobile home park to the south, and then across the freeway to the west, there are residential properties also.
So that gets done only after we give the direction on whether we want to go forward with this, not before?
That's correct. It would be done through the conditional use permit.
Mr. Mayor, the, excuse me, one other thing that we would do in response to Councilmember Ginn with the lighting, a lot of times in these type of agreements that we have in development agreement, we would also require the billboard company to dim the lights below a certain luminums at times of the night so that it doesn't shine on outlining areas. So we can regulate actually the lighting as well during times of the day.
Okay.
And that would come out in the environmental analysis.
Further questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved by Lemon, seconded by Hoffmeyer to go forward with this, with this establishing of regulations, I guess is what we're doing. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes, item number five, proposed revision of farmers' market hours as specified in Exhibit A of the agreement with Veterans Farmers Markets. We have staff report, please.
Yes, sir. As you know, our daytime farmer's market has been operating at Progress Park. We tried different days, different times, but the market hasn't attracted the amount of people, customers, that they had hoped. We've gone out of our way to advertise the market on several platforms, through social media, through banners, through A-frame barricades. The market operator recently approached us and asked to change the hours of operation of their daytime market, hoping that the new hours will bring out more customers. So with that, we have before you the amendment to the agreement, and Dave Johnson, our Community Services and Recreation Department head, will handle the item. Dave?
Thank you, John. Mayor and council members, as John noted, so we do have an agreement with Veterans Farmers Markets. They're the one that took over from the prior market vendor. They are not, again, meeting essentially our standards, so we'd like to see more vendors add at the market. That's certainly something that he wants because that will make him successful. So he did talk to his vendors. His vendors are currently operating from 11 to 4 per the contract. They requested to go from 9 to 2, which was actually the hours of the previous market. So again, it's, we go off the hours that they request, and 11 to 4 was his original estimated time that he thought would work. So he's now asking us to go back to the 9 to 2 hours. We don't see a problem with this. So the Exhibit A that you have in your report, that's the part of the agreement that specifies the scope of work and that specifies the hours they can operate. So what we're requesting is that we change that scope of work back to the 9 to 2 hours. That would then affect, they can be there two hours earlier to set up, and they can be two hours later for cleanup. So we'll just make those adjustments for the exhibit, and with your approval, we're recommending that we either approve or revise their request for revised hours. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just have one, Dave. What happened, we used to have them on Saturdays, right? And then they moved them to Fridays?
The initial market that we tried was with, again, another vendor company. They did it at the Paramount, I'm sorry, the Bianchi parking lot across from Paramount Park.
Right.
It was on a Saturday, and that did not work out either. So he folded.
I'm sorry, no, because I'm just thinking, like, for people that work, I mean, how do you go to a farmer's market when it's like on a Friday morning compared to Saturday morning? So I was just wondering if the attendance was off because of location, or, I mean, because I would love to go, but...
On a Saturday morning, I think is a great idea.
We let them choose the location. We let them choose the hours. There are a lot of markets that operate during the day. We have offered to him that if he'd like to do a pop-up market on a Saturday or Sunday, or even in the evening, we would try that to see if there's any interest, and he has so far not engaged us with that.
We ask again? I mean, just to see? I mean, I think there's a lot of people that are engaged with the farmer's market, and maybe trying again on a Saturday morning at Progress Park, now that you've said it there. I think everybody knows that it's Progress Park now. Let me just try it.
It's basically in the hands of the operator, though.
Operator, yeah.
And that's what he's saying. He hasn't wanted to do that.
You approached him. We just haven't got an answer yet, right?
He has not indicated in any way that he would like to proceed with something like that. Again, one of the things he says when they, when you bring up a Saturday is that there's a lot of Saturday markets as well. And so it's, he's having difficulty now getting vendors to come out to this market. Saturday is even harder to get vendors to come out because they're already at successful markets. So he has that concern. The concern we have also is Progress Park is a very heavily picnic park, and that there would be a parking and crowd issue at that park if we had a market there. That does not mean that we can't try it someplace else, but again, so far, as Councilmember Lemon said, the vendor has to be willing to do it.
Yes, be willing, yeah. Further questions? None?
Move approval.
Second.
Move to approve the hours, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay, been moved to approve the hours by Lemon, seconded by Hoffmeyer. We have roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Item number six, development of nonprofit Paramount Historical Society. Can we have a roll call, please?
I know what you meant, Mr. Mayor.
I'm getting ahead of myself here.
That's fine. After the city's 60th anniversary celebration, if you recall, we noticed a pretty strong interest in, for our community's pass. This led right into formation of a heritage committee by a group of community members and a very successful heritage parade, as we all saw. Additionally, over time, we received the occasional inquiry about the public, having, from the public about having a museum, a city museum, which we've been researching over the last several months. So we wanted to really capitalize on this momentum and get your direction on the formation of a historical society. So with that, I'll turn it over once again to our Community Services and Recreation Director, Dave Johnson, to handle the item.
Thank you, John, Mayor and council members. So John's already given the background. You did a really good job. Thank you. So, yeah, there is a lot of interest in Paramount Heritage, and that's a really positive thing. We certainly saw that with our 60th anniversary event, the Heritage Festival, with the organic development of a committee that formed that, brought that parade back after 50 years. So that was really all positive things. So with the direction of the city manager, we have gone out to various local sites that do, local municipalities that do, sorry, have museums. And, you know, so we got a kind of a gist of what they look like, how they operate. We also had some students, graduate students, from Pepperine and Cal State Long, Los Angeles come out, and they also use this project as a school project to research how these cities run, or how these cities get involved with these museums. So the core part of it was that all these museums are operated not by the cities, but by 501(c) nonprofits. So that's the core thing that we're going to have to engage in to be a part, to make this museum happen. The city involvement generally runs from, you know, there might be some financial assistance, there might be the use of facility, supply, sometimes administrative support, but it's always, again, a nonprofit that's actually running the museum itself. In terms of quality, so what we saw in our own surveys of various cities, you know, they run from, you know, some really amazingly researched and well-designed facilities to ones that are really mom and pop kind of looking facilities. So we got a sense of, you know, kind of what we didn't want and what we do want to see. The nonprofit is also essential because to form this museum, we're going to have to acquire historical items that are relevant to our development and that are appropriate. So once we form this nonprofit, part of that will be, assist us to be able to seek out those donations that will become a part of the eventual museum. So to form this Paramount Historical Society, we're going to need some articles and corporation and bylaws. These bylaws will dictate who can be part of this organization. That is something that we will bring back to the council once we get those designed and run through the city attorney. Once we have this all put together, if the council approves, we'll begin marketing and recruiting for this Paramount Historical Society. We will then, once that society is formed, they have a board, we will then actually file the application with the state and the IRS for a formal 501(c)(3). It will be the board chair that will actually sign the application, so it'll come from the nonprofit itself. And then after that, we get into a marketing plan where we need to let our community know that this is what we're doing. And again, please engage us with whatever materials and stories and photos and history they might have that might be relevant. And then we continue to work to find a home for this eventual museum. And that concludes my report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
Dave, I don't know if you know, but I work at a museum in LA, and so it is a 501 totally separate from the Los Angeles Police Department. They have their own museum. They have a board, an executive board. We have the bylaws. I'm in the process of actually being a board member. But if anybody would like to have a tour, it's kind of going to fall in the same lines, but you're right, it's a totally separate entity than the LAPDN. This would have to be a totally separate entity than the city. But if you'd like a tour to see how, what we did, I mean, I'd be happy to arrange that. It's really cool, all the historical value. And then we would be able to assist you with, you know, as far as blueprints for bylaws and all that stuff for a 501(c) for a museum.
That would be great, especially since we're looking at other cities or other organizations or bylaws, so more input, the best.
So we've been there since, I think, 98. So it's pretty cool.
Further questions? I just have a comment because I started talking about a museum probably 12 years ago, I think, when I saw some in Kansas in towns that had about maybe 200, 300 people, and they had their own museum. I'm like, gosh, we ought to have something like that, you know. Glad to see something's moving forward now.
Yes, sir.
No further questions?
I'll move the item.
Second.
Moved by Lemon, seconded by Hoffmeyer to develop the nonprofit Paramount Historical Society. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Ginn?
Yes.
Councilmember Lemmons?
Yes.
Councilmember Omos?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hoffmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Hanson?
Yes. Okay, comments or community reports, council members?
I'll go.
Go ahead.
So attended most of the concerts in the park. It was a really nice series. I think the residents really enjoyed it. And then I wanted to open this up to the community. Assembly member Christina Garcia is hosting a movie night, and she has invited the Paramount residents to attend. It's going to be held in Bell Gardens on Thursday evening from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. The movie screening is "The Devil We Know," and it's being hosted by the Sierra Club in her office, and it deals with fume suppressants. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is because we have one plating company in the city of Paramount that uses fume suppressants. And it's good information for anybody concerned about what's in the air that's not being registered by the monitors. And in her district, there's a lot of these plating companies, and in Paramount, we only have one, but it would still be really good information. And so if anybody is interested in going, you can look it up online under Christina Garcia's Assembly page, or you can ask me if you have any questions. And then if I could just get an update on our ordinance on the garden in the front yards that was in the process of being approved, because I keep getting asked about that as well.
Absolutely. John?
Yes, Councilmember Ginn, we're taking an ordinance to the Planning Commission in September, and then we'll bring it to you in October.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have.
Good.
Yeah, Dave, I just want to say I think you did a great job with the variety of music at the concerts this year. There was a couple of people that were asking, hey, what about this kind of music and this kind of music? Of course, everybody has a, you know, mixture of what they like. Have you ever thought about maybe just like, you know, doing a survey or, I don't know, just getting something out to the community, asking them what other type of music they would like to see at the summer concerts?
We have not done a survey. We've actually, we have actually talked to the youth commission about it, Parks and Rec about it, the Parks and Rec Commission, but we're not adverse to doing a community survey. We can use, you know, like a Survey Monkey, electronic survey. We can do that. Sure.
Anything else?
Nope.
Yeah, nothing?
Nope.
Well, I'm probably get tired of hearing me talk about mosquitoes, I suppose.
Oh, never.
There are. Oh, look, she bored already. There are, there are some around again. They have found some more positive West Nile virus mosquitoes. None in Paramount as of yet, but they are around us in Bell Flower and Long Beach, and I think Bell Gardens, Bell had some too. Again, they're urging everybody to, you're out in, any time anymore because of the Asian tiger mosquitoes has a tendency, they're very aggressive, and they'll bite at any time, not just in the early morning and the evening hour. So get out the mosquito repellent, and hopefully no one comes down with West Nile in Paramount here. I don't have anything else above that, I don't think. Staff, anything?
No, sir.
Nothing. Then this meeting is adjourned until our regular meeting September 3 at 6:00 p.m.